Good morning, and I want to welcome everyone to the March 7th Planning Commission zoning hearing. We're going to start with Pastor Matt Carver from Burnt Hickory Church of Christ that is going here today to lead us with our invocation. Pastor Carver?
Let's pray. God our Father, we thank you for the mercies of this new day. We thank you for your guidance and your protection which has led us to this moment. We thank you for all of the gifts and benefits that we enjoy graciously from your hand, day by day and moment by moment. We ask that as this deliberating body meets today, that you would bless each participant, that you would bless their children and their children's children, that they might walk in your light, in your justice, in your wisdom. We pray now that as these events unfold this morning and these talks take place, that you would fill them with a sense of all that is right and good and just and true. And we pray that a spirit of peace and gentleness prevail over this assembly. Finally, we ask in all humility that you would continue to pour out your blessings and prosperity on our city, on our state, and on our country. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you Pastor Carver. Would you please stand and join me for the plate of allegiance?
But what is in supply of the United States of America? It's a republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are going to get started with today's meeting. I now want to turn it over to Mr. John Peterson to review our agenda for today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process, preach and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When a case is called, we would ask that the applicant please stand up and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. After that, we're going to call to see if there's anyone here opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that the opposition please stand up and raise their hand so they can be counted for the official record. After that, we're going to ask both parties to come forward to be sworn in so they can present testimony to the board. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case concerns. There's not a process to reserve your time, and there's not a rebuttal process, so you want to convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person who wishes to speak on a case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. After that, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. After that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the matter at hand. There is one case on today's printed agenda which has been withdrawn without prejudice, and this case will not be heard. It's resounding case Z-81 of 2022, Prime Properties 9 LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been either held or continued, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z-55 of 2022, Kenneth B. Clary. This case was continued until the April 4th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-55 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-60 of 2022, Branch Acquisition Company LLC. This case was continued until the April 4th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-60 of 2022 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-65 of 2022, Dray Pack Investments LLC. This case was continued until the April 4th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-65 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-67 of 2022, SMB Investments Incorporated. This case was continued until the April 4th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-67 will not be heard today. And finally, resounding case Z-2 of 2023, SWI Investments LLC. This case was continued until the April 4th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-2 will not be heard today. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off on your cell phone, as the ringing does interfere with the broadcast and the presentation. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement if they made a campaign contribution within the last two years of $250 or more to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Lastly, I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party, the information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted to the board after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their request or at their discretion. Mr. Chairman, Board, there is one request to say for an early head count. Can I get a show of people here who are opposed to resounding case Z-4, 2023, Noble Storage LLC? Please stand and raise your hands. Dr. Record Show, there's 11 people here opposed to resounding case Z-4, 2023. Is there anyone here in support of resounding case Z-4, 2023? Yeah, the applicant representative is here in support, so there's one. All right, with that, Mr. Chairman, Board, I'm ready to start the, we're ready to start the agenda. There's nothing on consent today, so we're going to go directly into the agenda. First case we're going to hear today is LUP 23 of 2022. Coiman, Aliado, Mazareos Reyes request a temporary land use permit to allow landscape business and related vehicle parking in Landlaw 626 of the 19th District. The property is located on the south side of Milford Church Road across from Farmington Drive. Is the applicant present? The director of the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 23?
No.
The director of the record shows no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward, be sworn in, to present testimony? Can we put this on hold and go through the next case and just come back to it?
Yeah. Oh, he's coming in now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning, I wasn't expecting you first.
Hey, good morning. If you would state your name for the record and then present your case.
Sure. Michael Monteroso. And yeah, so we're here today to request permission to park two of our trucks and a trailer on our property. We have already gone through the effort of enclosing the property such that none of the vehicles or the trailers on the property are actually visible from the street. Additionally, we've gone to all of the neighbors in the immediate area and have received permission from them, written and submitted to the board, that they don't have any problems or issues with, with us having our vehicles on there. Additionally, we have spoken with and requested permission from the power company, which is our immediate neighbor to the right, as you can see on the map there. And they actually, part of the parking that we have is on their property, and of course they have allowed us to, to use that, and then of course they use that entrances as well there. If you can see on the top left corner there, that, that portion of their property, right there, that is actually the entrance that we use to get into the parking right there. And so of course, the city or the power company actually uses that entrance as well for, for their commercial vehicles, so we just request that the board take into consideration that fact and approve our, our permit.
Anything else you want to share?
That is it?
Okay, I would just say stay, stay right there. Is this correct? There's no opposition for this, correct?
Correct.
All right. This is in District 4, so I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Hughes to lead our question and discussion.
Thank you Chairman Vault. When we last talked, I think a month ago, it looks like you, we talked about the opportunity to revisit your original request, I think, which had shippers, it had dump trucks, it had other, other items that were part of that original request. You've now scaled that back, it sounds like.
Yeah.
When you talk about trucks, what type of trucks are these?
So there are two dump trucks and a trailer. The trailer is a small utility trailer, and the two dump trucks are, I don't know what the make and the model are, I can have Coiman look it up for us, but they're two dump trucks, essentially.
Okay. And I think in your updated request for the Planning Commission to consider, it was indicated that you have two employees coming on a daily basis.
Yeah, exactly. So for, generally it would be daily, but it would depend on the jobs that we have, of course. And so those two employees would come with their personal vehicles and then use the, the trucks that we have for whatever work that we need. And it's not necessarily every day, but potentially every day, so we just put every day.
Where would the employees park their vehicles?
So we, we have private parking on the actual premises. The parking that we're requesting is just for the trucks. No storage will be had there, no materials, just the two trucks and the, and the trailer.
Would the employees be parking behind the fence that you mentioned?
Right, on the property.
On the property, yes, on the property. Okay. If I have any other questions. You also mentioned you think had a petition signed by neighbors in support of this.
Yeah, we submitted that not last meeting, but the meeting before that, so I don't know if you guys have a copy of that, but we never received it back.
I think the only, I don't know, this, the only one I have is signed by Mr. Tony Stallings.
So that was the one that was originally received in September, I think? That one has the September snap? But we submitted one after that, the, the one after that?
Staff have an updated one?
There may be one to file, but I recall he's, he had a slide at the last hearing that had the names called out on the map, right?
Yeah.
Where he had approval.
Yeah.
Okay. And I think Mr. Stallings, if I remember correctly, lives on Milford Chase, which is church. Just on the south side of this property, that house right to the right there.
Okay, I think she has the list there for you.
Ah, there it is, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I don't know if you can pull up the, the map though? Okay. I can, I can, I don't know. I can email it again, but.
Okay, and then you've already indicated that the adjoining property owner to?
Yes, every single one of the properties within the immediate area, so if you look right here, those three that are showing right there, those three, and then if you scroll up on the other side of the street, basically every single one that's right in front there. So those two that are connected, the, on the right, those two that are connected, the middle one right here, yep, that one, and then the one on the left right here, the corner. Yep, and then also that one, and then the one just to the left of it, yeah, that one.
Okay. I think.
And then the ones behind the property as well. There's three behind the property that weren't shown. Oh yeah, there it is. These are all the properties.
That's helpful, thank you.
So the three behind, the three next to, and the five in front.
Okay. That's, I don't have any additional questions of the applicant, any other?
Any other questions for the applicant?
Nope, so I'll turn it back to you. All right. That's all I have for right now.
Okay.
I want to call up staff real quick.
Okay, all right, thank you.
If I could have Amy from DOT come up?
Hey Amy, just real quick, I'm looking at the zoning analysis. DOT's recommendations are to obviously recommend no parking on the right of way, and then recommend that the driveway be upgraded to a commercial driveway standards, is that?
Correct, and since they aren't going to be coming in for a land use permit, I went ahead and put some additional information about what we need for that driveway, such as we need to make sure that the site is decent adequate, and, and then the commercial standard, of course, as far as width and, and construction.
All right, are there any, any questions?
You have the question for Amy?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think at this point, there's no opposition as, as it relates to this land use permit The applicant has gone back and used this 30 days wisely, I think, to make some adjustments to the request. At this point in time, I'm prepared to make a, a motion in support, the recommending support of the land use permit request, subject to the following conditions. That he'd be allowed to park two trucks and one trailer inside the fenced area. That two, only two employees be allowed to come, and that the hours of operation would be from 8 till 5:30 during, on weekdays, no weekend hours. The employees' parking will be behind the fenced area only. There will be no landscape debris or other materials stored or contained on, on the truck, trucks overnight, and no, no outdoor storage at all. And that there'll be no chipping or grinding of any landscape materials onsite at all. And that this permit would be just for a 12-month period. I think it's important at this point in time, we, since this was brought to our attention because of a code enforcement matter, that we give them 12 months just to see how things operate during that period, and if things are sufficient, he can come back to have a, be considered for a longer period of time. That is my motion.
Okay, Michael. You've been on consent.
And I would like to place this on consent.
I have a second from Commissioner Danz. Is there any discussion? If not, let's call the question. A vote of five to zero for, to recommend approval for LUP 23. Thank you.
So just to remind the applicant, come back in two weeks for the Board of Commissioners hearing, okay? Come back to this room in two weeks. All right. Next case is resounding case Z-3 of 2023, Cynthia Jones and Cindy Nash Enterprises LLC. Request rezoning from R-20 and PSC to NRC for retail in Landlaw 413 of the 18th District. Property is located on the south side of South Gordon Road, east of Factory Shaw's Road. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for Z-3, Cynthia Jones and Cindy Nash Enterprises?
No.
Is there anyone here opposed to Z-3? The director of the record, there's three people opposed?
Four.
Four, four people opposed. The applicant is not present, Mr. Chairman.
This is in District 4, so Commissioner Hughes, did you want to? Since the applicant is not here, do you have any expectation that there, we heard from the applicant?
The applicant's been a little bit difficult to hear, to talk to. Do we want to hear from the opposition since they're here?
I, I'm not opposed to that. Can we, can we attempt to contact applicant?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's, let's attempt to contact applicant. Are you okay with hearing from the opposition?
I, I am, I am open to that.
Okay. We'll hear from the opposition if we want to go ahead and swear them in, and we will give them 10 minutes to present their opposition.
Okay, my name is Steve Young. I'm Representative Mabelton Improvement Coalition, and I'm here to talk about my concerns with this property. The, our organization does support the rezoning to NRC, however, we have some severe reservations about the use the applicant has proposed for this property. If you notice on the left-hand side, property 705, that is a nonprofit organization that does community outreach. The piece of property on the right-hand side, I think it's 685, is a daycare center, and the surrounding parcels to the south are even, I believe there's zone PSC right now, but they are actually being used as single-family dwelling, so they're actually residential property. And the proposed use as a convenience store that sells liquor and, and gas is completely inappropriate for this area. For one thing, the property is too narrow to support any kind of sight and sound buffering, and liquor sales are just inappropriate for a semi-residential and this very soft use as a nonprofit and daycare center. Could I have the next slide, please? Okay, here's the site plan that was submitted. Like I say, there's no room for any kind of buffering on either side of the property, and also, there's no plans for a detention pond or dumpster storage indicated on the site plan, and we think that this is just not a very good proposal as it is right now. Next slide, please. So what we propose is the NRC is, zoning is appropriate for this category, however, we think liquor sales and gasoline sales should be prohibited in, in addition to adult entertainment and sexually explicit material, drug-related paraphernalia, any kind of pawn shop or precious metal dealing, metal, I mean, nightclubs, video cades, check cashing, discount sales, auto sales, used tire sales, any kind of dispatching services, wholesale establishments, gun knives and shooting ranges, fire sales, thrift stores, secondhand stores, and flea We also believe a two-step process should be used, the first step being rezone this piece of property as NRC, and then when a suitable site plan is submitted, to have it put on the commissioners, the Board of Commissioners' agenda as another business item. I think in this way, we can get the most effective use out of this property and use it in a manner that's consistent with the neighborhood and something that's, that the community itself would be happy with. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there other speakers in opposition? You have a balance of six minutes and 32 seconds to speak.
I am Attorney Lenita Mitchell Blackwell, and I am representing a couple of the businesses that are in that community, one of whom is here, Leisure Locks, as well as some of the concerned homeowners. Because of where the proposed site is, we are concerned about the liquor sales. As already stated, on each side, there are businesses that purposefully support and administer services to children and other purposes in the community. Also, Leisure Locks is directly across the street at 674 South Gordon, and already has issues with the amount of traffic that has been gendered. Yes, thank you for pulling up the, the map, with the amount of traffic that is currently coming through with the nonprofit center, particularly the event planning. And there's been no information provided as to how the proposed business with the pumps, the gas pumps, as well as the retail sales are going to impact South Gordon, because there is no ingress or exgress on that street other than South Gordon. There is no way for any traffic to flow onto Factory Shoals. And so we are asking that if the applicant is serious about making this a going concern, that she, like the further person, the person who already testified stated, that there are other businesses that could be placed there that would not impact the community in such a detrimental manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other in opposition? Okay, have we been able to get the applicant?
I did hear her on the phone, and she indicated that she would head this way, but should be up to an hour.
Okay. Do we want to pause this case? Can we revisit it? Or what do you? I'm looking as fast.
Well, that would be up to the board to decide, Mr. Chairman. I mean, the applicant had a lot of notice at this hearing, started at nine o'clock. It says it on her signs, it was in her letters, it's in the application in several different places. She talked to staff at the applicant meeting, so, you know, the 9:00 AM start time was, was well known by the applicant.
Thank you.
And Chairman, if I might add, I, I think staff has been working very diligently with this applicant. It's my understanding, and be my, my hope that we could proceed with this case as presented to this point.
Okay. Thank you for that. This is in District 4, and seeing it's in District 4. Commissioner Hughes, we will take your recommendation, and I'll turn it over to you to lead us through the discussion.
Such as it is, Chairman, thank you. I've, I've reviewed staff's analysis in some detail, and also well aware of some concerns the community has with respect to liquor sales, given the current existing land uses in the area, and the types of businesses that are in the area with respect to daycare, a nonprofit joining the property as well, and taking into account some of the feedback from the Mabelton Improvement Coalition, and obviously the testimony we just heard here earlier today, or just a few moments ago. And staff is recommending approval, subject to the following conditions, and I would present these as, as my recommendation or motion as well. First, that use as a convenience store with fuel cells would be prohibited. All automotive uses are prohibited. Permitted uses are neighborhood retail uses and professional offices. The final site plan building architecture to be approved by the district commissioner. Install 20-foot landscape buffer along all residentially-used property, accounting arborists to approve the final landscape plan. Install an eight-foot landscape enhancement strip as required on South Gordon Road. Fire department comments and recommendations, stormwater management comments and recommendations, water and sewer comments and recommendations, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations, and existing sheds and storage buildings to be demolished within 90 days of the Board of Commissioners' decision. That's my motion.
So just to be clear, that's approval with the steps that you provided.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Second?
I have a second from Commissioner Danz. Is there any discussion? Yes. Okay, Commissioner Malone?
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes, are you, you heard the gentleman from the Mabel, Mabelton Improvement Coalition suggests it might be appropriate to place additional further conditions in terms of, for example, no pawn shops, things of that nature? Have you? Have you considered that request?
My understanding is that those aren't permitted uses in the NRC anyway. So I don't know that that would be necessary.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'll call the question. Vote of five to zero to recommend approval of Z3 with the recommended stipulations. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the Board, the next zoning case has companion and special land use permit with it. Would be the Board's desire to hear both cases together and then just make separate motions on both cases?
Everybody, okay. Yes, we'd hear those together.
Okay. Res zoning case Z4 of 2023, Noble Storage LLC, request rezoning from LRO to NRC for a climate-controlled self-storage facility in Land Lot 539 of the 16th District, located on the south side of Freeman Road, east of Johnson Ferry Road. Earlier, there were 11 people here opposed. Together with SLEP2 of 2023, Noble Storage LLC, request a special land use permit for a climate-controlled self-storage facility in Land Lot 539 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Freeman Road, east of Johnson Ferry Road. And again, there was 11 people here opposed earlier. All those who wish to address the Board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Planning Commissioners, good morning. I'm Adam Rosen with Rosen, Rosen &amp; Riley, and I represent Noble Storage in this rezoning and land use permit application, Z4, and SLEP2. This morning, we have the founder and CEO of Noble Storage with us, Brad Noble. We also have a representative from Civil Logistics who's done the civil work on this site. And to the extent that either of them can answer any questions or help in our discussion today, I know that they are happy to do so. Want to kind of catch us up to where we are timing-wise in this case to where we are today. We were originally scheduled to be heard in February. After our applicant's meeting, we took some additional time to look at things from a civil perspective, from a development engineering perspective, to look at stormwater, to look at sewer. And we feel like we've resolved those items as far as getting ourselves through to plan review. To the extent there's any questions about those, we can, can answer and try to address those today before the Board. So that got us to, to being heard in March instead of February. While the case has been pending a couple of weeks ago, the surrounding community and East Cobb Civic Association was gracious enough to meet with us on a Saturday afternoon and had a professional and productive discussion. And I know that they are here, plus additional others with us today. So we appreciate their involvement and flattered that they're filling the room and no one else is here, but they're here to, to see us. So we appreciate their involvement in the case. The property itself is 4290 Freeman Road. It is the property there with a star, south side of Freeman Road. And just to, to this and some pictures to orient us to, to the property itself and where we are and what the, the current character is. West of us, the industrial-looking property is Pike Nurseries that joins Freeman Road and Johnson Ferry. North is kind of a cluster of, of different retail and commercial uses that have been in existence off of Johnson Ferry Road for many years. And then going around to the east and sou- southern side are our residential adjoining communities that wrap around the, to the right and, and south of our property there. So getting to the property, this is off of Johnson Ferry Road. This is the intersection off of Johnson Ferry at Freeman Road. The first picture there to Pike Nursery and the restaurant across the street. And then a little further down, Johnson Ferry is the entrance to the, the commercial shopping center that you saw in the last screen. Our view across Freeman Road is to that commercial shopping center. And then the view looking back from Johnson Ferry Road down Freeman Road towards the residential communities is, is this view here. This is the property as it is today. Well, a little bit prior to today, but this is about what it looks like currently, undeveloped. And want to look at this for sale sign because that is what this property has looked like for many years. This property was originally zoned general commercial. It was rezoned in 2011. The request at the time was to rezone to NRC for an automotive-related use. That was deleted to its current LRO zoning that it is now for professional office use. The same owner that purchased the property prior to that case is the owner of the property still today and has spent the last 12 years or so trying to market and sell the property. And this is its current condition as, as it has been for those years. So that's an important consideration for us and we think for you as a Board today when we're looking at what's the reasonable economic use of the property in its current condition as zoned and limited to professional office use. And so that's reflected in the zoning here. And I want to point out in the zoning map, you know, we're, we're in the Neighborhood Activity Center, as you know. And there's been a lot of discussion about how we are on the edge of the Neighborhood Activity Center. And it's not uncommon, particularly for those residential neighbors to a road like Johnson Ferry, to adjoin the commercial developments that run up and down a major thoroughfare like Johnson Ferry Road. And so you see those here, those commercial uses that do adjoin the residential uses. And so that's, I think, an important consideration for you as a planning commission in considering what's appropriate for this property going forward. A little bit about Noble Storage. So you learn when you grow up in Marietta, you don't necessarily know half the Marietta population, particularly those in unincorporated Cobb. Mr. Noble is one of those that, that I did not know, but grew up here, went to Walton. It's a family-owned business. But their development territory is, is more than just metro Atlanta area. They've got a lot of experience throughout the country and I think bring a good perspective, and in this case, a, a home perspective of this actually being something that's in their, their backyard. So the site plan that we've submitted in this case, it has not changed since original filing. I think pretty straightforward as far as the, the actual plan itself is concerned. This shows the, the footprint of the building, shows the entrance and exit points of what's been recommended as the first entrance point being the entrance and then exit for the, the ladder further down Freeman Road. One thing that we have done that's important is we've kept the setbacks and buffering that was stipulated in the 2011 zoning. And so you can see that on the perimeter of the site for those additional buffering and setbacks that were stipulated in order to protect the residential neighbors adjoining our property. And so that would, this is the minutes from that case. And, and this shows you to the left and, and back of the property, that buffering and setback delineation that was provided in 2011 that we're not asking to vary from. This is the architecture that has been submitted in this case. One of the discussions that we've had with staff and with the community is that architecture is something that, that we can, can work on. This is continuing work as far as our project is concerned. I know we were a little spoiled recently on, on a recent case with some, with some good-looking architecture. And that's something that, you know, we're more than willing to continue to work on if that's a consideration of this Board. The initial attempt by our team was to, to try to match and, and be consistent with the character in the area, but be consistent with what the architectural requirements would, would dictate without any variance to that. But again, you know, we're, we're very much willing to work with, with something like this that we can change and, and, and respond to any, any concern or comment for as far as architecture is concerned. There's been a lot of discussion about this type of use, and there's been a lot of discussion about this use adjoining residential at the edge of a Neighborhood Activity Center. And the word intense being used a lot. And one of the things I came across.
You have, you have two minutes.
Thank you. One of the things I came across this morning, and without truly vouching for this, this site, I at least put the site there for you so that you know it came from, from somewhere. But the consideration of self-storage at the edge of a Neighborhood Activity Center has been obviously the focus here. This property has, has not been able to develop as it's currently zoned. And the different considerations related to storage are its traffic, its limited drain on municipal resources. And you see that discussed in this, in this article. Do not use significant electrical gas, oil, water, sewer, other resources. You know, this is truly one of those uses that does a lot of sitting. It says that 25% of the users that visit the facility, visit the facility on a monthly average. Your staff analysis has our, our unit count in the 350 range. Whether it's 350 or a number close to that, if you do that on a monthly basis, you're talking about a few trips a day. What's being asked is to keep this current zoning for office use. Three, four, five trips a day that may be generated by use like this is certainly not what you'll see with an office use. And so we think that those considerations are important for your discussion and for what would be appropriate here. We submitted a stipulation letter last week, February 27th. So we would ask for your, your recommendation of approval with those conditions, and those limit hours, those limit architecture, those limit lighting, and those protections that you would like to see in consideration of who our neighbors are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll hear from the opposition now.
Good morning. My name is Clifford Goodman, and I'm the HOA president for the Breckenridge neighborhood, which is just about a minute walk from 4290 Freeman Road. I'm also here to speak on behalf of the residents of Alpine Lakes and Byron's Pond. And with all due respect, the proposed facility is not going to be in Mr. Noble's backyard. It's going to be in ours. As you hopefully know, I submitted a letter a little while ago objecting to Noble Storage's proposal to rezone 4290 Freeman Road from LRO to NRC and to build the three-story 58, almost 5,800 square foot climate-controlled self-service storage facility. That letter was also signed by residents age 18 and older in Breckenridge, Byron's Pond, and Alpine Lakes. And to give you a clear picture of how the residents in the immediate area feel about the proposal, let me give you some numbers. Breckenridge is a 50-home neighborhood. 96 residents signed that letter. Byron's Pond has 14 homes. 32 residents signed. Alpine Lakes has 62 homes and 75 residents there also signed. As you can see, community opposition to Noble Storage's proposal is overwhelming. Why? It is not because we're anti-business. We're all working-class people who love the fact that we found a fantastic pocket neighborhood that's peaceful and quiet, yet so close to the businesses that give us everything we need. It's not that we oppose any business use for 4290 Freeman Road. The reason we oppose it is simple. You have to draw the line somewhere. Both the requested NRC zoning and proposed business are completely inappropriate for that specific property for the following reasons. Zoning 4290 Freeman Road to NRC is inconsistent with Cobb County Code. Section 134-213 states that areas zoned NRC should be at or near an intersection within the center of a Neighborhood Activity Center, as opposed to its edge. The very edge is exactly where 4290 Freeman Road is located because its property lines are adjacent to homes in both Alpine Lakes and Byron's Pond. The language in the county code is protect our residential neighborhoods from being negatively impacted by heavier commercial use areas. That's exactly why the county correctly denied a request by the landowner back in 2011 to rezone the property to NRC and has instead zoned it to LRO. In addition to NRC zoning being inappropriate, the proposed facility is not compatible with that location. First of all, county code section 134-213 provides that a building's height should not exceed that of adjacent buildings. There are no three-story buildings next to 4290 Freeman Road. Secondly, Cobb County Code requires anyone who wants to build and operate a climate-controlled self-service storage facility to obtain a special land use permit. Why is that? That's because these facilities have a tendency to impact nearby neighborhoods. Frankly, Noble Storage has provided insufficient information to address any of the factors the county is required to take into consideration under section 134-37E. 4290 Freeman Road is the only business property in the immediate area with no direct access to Johnson Ferry Road. It's a small residential street, and the proposed business will create a substantial increase in traffic, including large vehicles, into our neighborhoods, which have a large number of small children who walk, ride their bikes, and play. Furthermore, the intersection of Freeman Road and Johnson Ferry Road, as you saw from Mr. Rosen's picture, has poor sightlines and no traffic light, which makes it a treacherous place to enter Johnson Ferry Road. Additional non-residential traffic will increase commute times for residents and pose a greater risk of vehicle accidents at that intersection. An adjacent neighbor in Alpine Lakes expressed the concern about noise from the proposed facility's HVAC system. During the meeting that Mr. Rosen mentioned on February 25th, Brad Noble of Noble Storage admitted that there'll be a substantial HVAC system for the facility, but he couldn't provide data on how loud it would be for its immediate neighbors. It's just a simple fact that HVAC systems make noise. And one needed to cool an almost 58,000-square-foot climate-controlled storage facility in the southeast is going to make a lot of it. That noise, combined with the additional security lighting that would be installed, will impact the right that adjacent neighbors have to the quiet enjoyment of their homes and yards. Why would a facility need security lighting? While storage facilities do provide a needed service to communities, the simple fact is that they also attract criminal activity in two ways. One, they're used by criminals to store contraband such as drugs, instruments of criminal activity such as firearms, and fruits of criminal activity such as stolen property. Two, they're targeted by criminals who break into and steal property being stored there by customers. The fact that the proposed facility would be located on a quiet residential street that's never visited by law enforcement except for the rare service call would only make that location a more attractive target for criminals. We don't want to increase the potential for criminal activity in our neighborhoods. The proposed facility is likely to reduce property values. While there's very little empirical data on that subject, one hard fact is that property is worth what someone's willing to pay for it. Given the overwhelming opposition by residents, it's entirely logical that the proposed facility may impact a prospective homeowner's decision to purchase a home in one of our neighborhoods or how much to pay for a home there. Would any of you want to live next door to the proposed facility? Also, the proposed facility would not provide a unique necessary service for the community. The fact is, there are many other storage facilities within just a short drive. The simple fact is there's absolutely nothing Noble Storage has presented or in fact exists that can justify rejecting your 2011 decision, current county staff recommendations, and the overwhelming outcry of three residential neighborhoods that both the proposed rezoning and the storage facility are incompatible with the nature and quality of the residential neighborhoods near 4290 Freeman Road. And finally, the issue of zoning 4290 Freeman Road to NRC was already addressed and properly decided by the county back in 2011. I know county staff has recommended this proposal be denied for substantially similar reasons. Just asking again, isn't a proper basis for the county to change a prior well-reasoned decision? And that's essentially what's happening here. The only argument Noble Storage appears to really make in favor of rezoning it to NRC this time is that the owner hasn't been able to sell it. That argument fails for a couple of reasons. First, Noble Storage isn't the appropriate party even be making this argument. It's not the property owner, and they should be buying land that's already properly zoned to build and operate the kind of business it conducts. Secondly, there are no facts presented to establish that the owner has aggressively Secondly, there are no facts presented to establish that the owner has aggressively and effectively marketed the property to businesses that are compatible with LRO zoning, so that he's even been reasonable in his assessment regarding the property's actual fair market value. This simply isn't the best location for a piece of commercial real estate. And even if such information was presented, the county should not, and hopefully will not, consider negatively impacting a large number of residents by increasing traffic and public safety risks while decreasing property value and people's ability to simply be, enjoy being at home, in order to bail someone else out from a bad business decision. In closing, we're not opposed to business or to responsible growth. We're in favor of keeping Cobb County an attractive place to both work and live. In order to keep it a great place to live, we need to preserve the nature and quality of our residential neighborhoods. Please don't do as Noble Storage asks, and ignore the county code that was drafted to specifically protect our quality of life. Please listen to your staff, your own good judgment, and the residents, and deny Noble's proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, this is in District 2, so I'm going to ask, turn it over to Commissioner Anderson and ask him to lead our discussion.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, sir.
Was there anyone else? Yeah, there was a minute left. Was there anyone else in opposition?
Anyone? Oh, come on, sorry. Yeah, there's a minute left to talk, so go for it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Richard Groom. I am president of East Cobb Civic Association and ECCA case manager for Z4 and SLUP 2. We have submitted to the commission our, our recommendation in writing on this past Wednesday, and we're in full support of the three local subdivisions that are impacted by this resolution, or by this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition for the last 30 seconds? Okay, now we will turn it over to Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to lay out how I'm thinking about this, so my first call would be to stormwater, then to DOT, and then after that, I have a couple of questions for planning. And then after that, I think there'll be a couple of issues that I'd like to get the feedback from the applicant and the opposition on. So just laying out the, laying out the order of the test here for the students. So Carl, can you come up, please?
Cobb Kenny's, Carl Carver, Cobb County Stormwater.
Great. Hey, Carl.
Hey.
Carl, would you be able to, in your, in your comments, you noted some of the challenges with the existing infrastructure for this site. Could you speak a little bit about how this site currently drains, and if this plan were to be approved, what necess, what would be the options that the applicant would have to actually address some of the drainage issues per county development standards?
Sure. The site currently is probably split into two different basins, or two different drainage areas. Part of the site existing is draining towards Freeman Road. The other part is draining to the southeast into the adjacent property. The, the topography is, in the southeast area is, has a pattern of a sheet flow type drainage pattern. And the area towards Freeman Road is sort of in a sheet flow, but once it gets into the right-of-way, it's, it's in a drainage well going into the adjacent property.
Great. Thank you, Carl. So on the applicant's proposal, they, I believe, were contemplating underground detention, which would clearly need to drain either into the street and/or the only other option, which would be clear, would be to secure access across an easement and potentially, is that, are those the two options?
Well, they could drain into the right-of-way. Whether, I don't know that DOT would allow them to pipe within the right-of-way, but they could drain into the right-of-way. In the southeast corner, if they drained that direction, they would probably discharge with a level spreader or something, some fashion of that to try to simulate the sheet flow. If they did that, they wouldn't necessarily have to get an easement downstream, because there's, there's a 10-foot or so strip between, to their eastern property line that's owned by someone else.
Great, got it. Great.
All of that could be handled during plan review.
Yes, okay. Excellent. All right. Thank you, Carl.
Before you leave, are there any other questions for Carl? Stormwater? Okay, thanks.
I'll make sure to do that. Okay. Great. And may I have Amy Diaz from DOT come up, please?
Amy Diaz, DOT.
Hi, Amy.
Hey.
So Amy, could you talk a little bit about, A, whether there, there's no existing curb and gutter on, on this site, as far as was noted in the staff analysis? If there were a solution for stormwater that allowed to drain into the right-of-way, what type of interventions or approvals from DOT would be required for that? I think there's a scenario where it just flows in, just sheet flow, and then there's another, which is obviously more intrusive. Can you talk a little bit about some of the limitations from a perspective of managing stormwater within that existing right-of-way?
Sure. There's two pieces there. So we, we have on our recommendations that they install curb and gutter. So there is no currently, but we do recommend that they put it in. The other thing is, is we do not allow drainage structures to connect up to our right-of-way. Obviously, sheet flow occurs all over the county. I mean, there's no way to keep sheet flow from going into the right-of-way, but we don't allow drainage to, to connect to the right-of-way deliberately.
Got it. Okay, great. And then in terms of the other comments you had, I think about ingress and egress, one question I had on this was, and this is a little bit of a hypothetical one, but if, if this were an office building, and just within the existing zoning category, would there be any meaningful difference in terms of traffic impacts or recommendations that you had from this?
So the, the square footage, you know, I'd have to compare the actual square footage of another site plan to answer that definitively. But self-storage, as we, as we've discussed in the past, is one of the lowest trip generators. So I would suspect that this is going to be the lowest trip generation that you can put onto the site.
And, and we've got some comments, just given, you know, I, I shop at the center right across the street from it, and, you know, kids go there, and so very familiar with this area, go to it way too often during the week. But one of the comments that we got was about, you're going to have box trucks, kind of heavy vehicles that would be coming in here. Are these roads suitable to support, even though there's an overall lower trip generation, those type of vehicles, whether it's from a, you know, traffic conflict perspective or from just simply the condition of the roads?
Well, Freeman Road is a local road, so it, it may not be up to a heavy sustained truck traffic. It's not a residential road, but we would have to investigate the pavement, basically, that, that's out there, and see if it, if it was up to having the heavy vehicles. Most self-storages don't have a high turnover of heavy vehicles, so that's not something that we've investigated yet.
Okay. That's great. My fellow commissioners, have any other questions of Amy? Okay, great. Thank you, Amy. Great. Our next other questions are for the planning staff. And so for Mr. Peterson, John, you'd recommended denial for this, and would welcome if you could just walk through some of the basis for that denial, and, and had a couple of follow-up questions on some of the specifics around the variances being requested.
Okay, you know, going back to what the applicant stated in his presentation, they, they tried to rezonate his property to NRC in 2011 for, I think, a commercial car repair shop, and the board did delete that to lowerize office at the time, because the board felt that the lowerized office would provide the best transition in between the heavier commercial uses along Johnson Ferry Road, back to the single-family residential down Freeman Road into the south. You know, the staff recommendation for this one is to deny it. It's based heavily, you know, on the proposed three-story building that, you know, staff would see looming over the adjacent single-family houses, and the staff did not think that was appropriate in this area, especially at the end of a node. The staff was concerned that, that, you know, with the lack of transition, it could be too disruptive for the neighbors. And in the JOSH plan, this is in a commercial and transitional zone on the JOSH plan, so, you know, that zone is there to help guide commercial growth, so it protects the adjacent single-family houses. The staff just doesn't believe that this proposal does that, and, you know, basically the intensity is, is why the staff recommended it be denied and retain its lowerized office status.
Excellent, great. Thank you. And John, just so we have it on the record, when we calculate floor-area ratio for these types of developments, that includes the basement that is being proposed here?
Correct.
Okay, great. The reason I ask that is just whenever these, for these self-storage facilities come up, generally, there's a criteria of, I think, up to one. Was our FAR cap?
For this one, it's .75.
.75, okay. The FAR cap for office LRO for this would be 0.5, right? So what that means is that, as of right, this could support a 22, call it 23,000-square-foot office for one acre site?
That's, that's right.
Okay, got it. So if nothing was done, they could build a 22,000-square-foot office building?
Subject to the existing zoning conditions from 2011, which require a lot of review and process.
Okay, got it. All right. Just wanted to frame up what the alternatives are. And then just as a reminder, the permitted uses under LOR would include things like a daycare and professional offices?
Correct.
Okay, got it. So, great. Great. Do my fellow commissioners have any other questions? Okay, great. Excellent. Thank you, John. And I had one question of the opposition, I think Mr. Goodman?
Phil, come, come to the mic, please. Thank you.
And while he's coming up, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Commissioner Anderson, I just want to clarify that under the zone, current zoning conditions, all they could do is professional office only. They couldn't do a daycare.
Okay.
So it's professional office only.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification. Mr. Goodman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Goodman, thank you for providing the, the letter and the additional detail. My general question was, given the constraints of the existing zoning, what, what, what would you like to see there? What would be supported by the community?
Well, I'm certainly, you know, don't feel like the community's in a, in a position to, to tell Mr. Nick's or, or a business, you know, that's properly zoned for LRO, what could be there. But, you know, what, what LRO is, I don't know, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but LRO zoning requires a certain type of architecture that creates that transition between the heavier commercial use and, and the residential homes, and, you know, with the pitched roof that sort of resembles a residence, you know, whether it's, you know, a medical office, or, you know, some sort of professional office, you know, anything, you know, something along those lines, something that's consistent and compatible with the zoning, and that will help maintain the nature and quality and, and values of, of the neighborhood is, is what we would support.
Okay. And, and just generally, is the, if you were to still the priority of concerns, would traffic be one, stormwater, architectural design? If I were just thinking about where those fit in your hierarchy of things to solve for? Because the reality of things, sometimes you can get one, you can't get the other. So just wanted to frame up, is what the level of kind of intensity of concern around, kind of each of those layers around traffic, design, stormwater, and market impact, I guess, would be another one, but that would be not for our view.
I mean, community safety is, is, I think, everyone's top priority, you know?
Okay.
You know, along with home values.
Yep.
And, you know, we, we, you know, it's a small neighborhood, you know, Freeman Road, Breckenridge is a dead end, Freeman Road's a dead-end street. My house is at the very end of that, and, you know, we, I, you know, every day, we see cars coming in, and we don't get a lot of through traffic, but we get cars coming in all the way to the end, and turning around, they're trying to drive through, they, they took a turn in there, and, you know, there, there are a lot of, this is a very family-focused neighborhood, and so is Alpine Lakes and Byron's Pond. And we've got small kids, and people feel that it's a safe neighborhood there. And, you know, we've got small children playing in the street, riding their bikes, and we just, you know, feel that, that an unnecessary, you know, granted, any business is going to have that, you know, is going to create that, at that, at that address to a certain extent. But, and I know that there's been some testimony and some statements about how self-service storage facilities create less, less traffic, but they, but they do create traffic, they do create traffic with larger vehicles. There isn't a lot of data out there. I did do a little research on, on traffic, and I found a, a study in Massachusetts for a, a self-service storage facility. Granted, it was substantially larger than the one that, that Mr. Noble's proposing. I think it was like a 70-something thousand square-foot facility, but their, their estimate was 80 trips per day, and that was based on people coming and going. And so, you know, something that's a little bit less, and they say it's only, instead of 80 trips, say it's 50 trips. Well, 50 trips for people who don't live there and aren't used to being in that neighborhood, you know, creates a substantial, is going to create a substantial risk to, to public safety, because I'm just, my wife doesn't like turning left at, on Freeman, you know, on Johnson Ferry Road off of Freeman Road. She'll drive through Alpine Lakes to get to Post Oak Tritt, turn right, and then there's a lighted intersection there. And we tell her, when my son just started driving, we told him to do the same thing, because it is a very, very dangerous intersection to turn left on.
Okay, great. Thank you for that additional color.
Yes, sir.
Great. And then may I have the applicant representative come up, please?
Could you talk a little bit about the marketing process that's taken place over the years for this building, given its existing kind of restrictions from the 2011 rezoning? Any feedback you've gotten from market, and the extent of the efforts that you've taken to market it with its existing zoning in place or otherwise?
Sure. Yeah, I can speak to at least as, as far as what I, what I've seen, what I, I know. I've personally searched FMLS. I've also had Mr. Nobles obtain some of that information from the owner themselves as far as the marketing history, and with that, you can see some of the actual listing history. I've seen it listed in price changes, which is, I think, indicative of them reacting to a stale piece of property and trying to, to change that. And I think the feedback that we've been told from the owner is that it was related to limitations from zoning, and that they didn't feel like there was something that they could do with the property. So I'm not the owner, and I, I didn't actually, you know, list it, but just by looking at what I can see as a Realtor and what we've been provided by them, that's what we've been able to see, a consistent attempt in history of, of listing the property.
Okay, great, great. I had a few more questions, but I failed to ask before whether the, I'll get back to the opposition if anyone had any other questions on there, but just wanted to address that before I moved on. So, excellent, thank you. The, can you talk a little bit about, thinking of renderings, we didn't have any real sections to understand kind of the visual impact of this, and, and given the height, do, do you have a sense of kind of how high, in terms of finished floor, actual top height, the, you know, final structure will be, and what kind of tree cover you anticipate having to provide kind of visual shielding?
So I, I do know that the, if you look at the topography as it is today, it shows our property above some of the surrounding properties. You can see that in the contour lines. I know that we will be removing dirt and digging down, for lack of a better term, so that it's more consistent. so that it's more consistent with the grades around us. I think you saw from what the existing coverage is around the perimeter and the height of those trees and to the extent that any of that's saved, it's, you know, that covers the height of this, of this building. So that rise that you see of the property, some of that's growth, but some of that is actually change in topography. And I can let Civil Logistics speak to that more if, if they can give you more exact numbers, but I know that we will be removing dirt, digging down, so that we're closer to the actual floor level of those that are around us. So we'll be closer to the maximum height allowed as far as what, what we actually are from street level, as opposed to what it would be if you just placed a building on top of the rise that's there now.
Got it, got it. Great. And, and we have the actual allowed FAR for this site of, this is almost, not quite double, but almost double that. Could you talk about a little bit, is that, we, we aren't obviously allowed to really look at market considerations per se, but just?
Sure.
Trying to understand the, given that most of the storage applications that have come through over the last, call it 18 months, have been squarely in that .7 FAR range. What does this project look like at, basically, an FAR that's more in line with the, you know, typical, you know, both zoning code? Does that mean the building goes from three stories to one with a basement? Does that mean that it's still three stories or two stories? Just trying to understand, absent that variance, are we looking at a building that's a single-story structure? And around what size would that structure be?
Yeah, I, I think I may need Mr. Noble to answer the specific square footage, but I think the, the reason that it is, the height that it is, is because the overall acreage doesn't allow us to sprawl. And I think the difference that you see in some of these others is that it's, it's utilizing a much bigger acreage area.
Mm-hmm.
And you may say, well, that's a good reason that it's not appropriate here, but it's also, I think, indicative of, you know, efficient use of the property as opposed to what you are commonly seeing that are overall using more acreage, more storage overall, but a lower, floor area ratio. I, I think that if, if you look at the maximum allowed and what we're proposing, yes, you'd see a building that's maybe two, but definitely removing the third story. And, and just economically, square footage, what it takes to develop a facility like this, that's where the number has to be for this property. It has to be, you know, that height because of it. So if that was something that we could work on, obviously, we would be, you know, that would be in the discussion of architecture and others that we could flex on and, and move with, but I think we're constrained as far as what's, what's feasible for something that would be, would actually work here.
That's, that's really helpful to know, just, no, that's helpful to know. Thank you for helping to frame up where the FAR is and kind of where, what's kind of the limit, maximum kind of threshold that works.
Sure, thank you.
Okay. The, the only other question I had was there was a comment about HVAC noise and in terms of, I think on a stipulation letter, might have addressed that, but can you speak a little bit about, just in terms of things like lighting impact? I know you referenced that in this tip. Would there be any issue with relocating those HVACs so that they are closer to pikes as opposed to actually facing the neighbors? Or maybe, was that something where just from a design constraint, those kind of have to be where they have to be?
As long as you're not asking me to give a specific decibel on the noise, I don't...
I will, I'll save that for next time.
That was a discussion, and I think, I know that was brought up as far as what Mr. Noble's response was.
Yeah.
And so I don't know, Brad, do you want to speak to that as far as whether we can move location? Obviously, that, those are the kind of things that if we can, you know, make changes, that would be...
Yeah. I imagine those are pretty easily mounted on a roof to kind of move them out of the way.
Brad Noble, Noble Storage.
Just a second, Mr. Noble. Was he sworn in?
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. Brad Noble, yeah, said the AC units, the plan right now is to have them on the roof. Where they are on the roof, it doesn't matter to me if it's better to have them all the way towards pikes.
Okay.
We could do that, we can move them around wherever we need them.
Okay. Great, thank you. Do my fellow commissioners have any other questions?
Any questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Great. So, just to kind of lead into the general discussion, overall, the key efforts that have been made around talking with the community are certainly things that we always look for and I think are, continue to be commendable. This site obviously has a transitional nature to it, and it's one where it does serve a role that is probably mostly defined by a need to, to buffer against some of the condition, adjacent conditions that are more intense from a commercial perspective. My sense is that the combination of the FAR being kind of a, the inability of that kind of intensity from a square footage to really go down to a line, a level that's more in line with code and with other existing zonings is, plus the combination of the stormwater constraints, which, which I believe would, would be difficult to achieve given some of the restrictions from, you know, piping in via DOT. Those are all things that are, I view as challenges. So with that in mind, my motion at this time would be to recommend denial of the application.
And? That's Z4.
Of Z4. And I guess I would need another motion for SL?
So, so let's go ahead and do this motion first and then come back to the special needs permit.
Okay.
Second?
So I have a second from Commissioner Dance as it relates to Z4 denial. Is there any discussion on that? If not, let's call the question. So we got a vote of five to zero for denial of Z4. And now, I'll turn it back to Commissioner Anderson.
Yes. And my motion for SLOP2, I got the number right, right? SLOP2, would be also for denial.
Second?
I have a second from Commissioner Dance. Any discussion on SLOP, on the recommendation for denial of SLOP2? If no, let's call the question. Again, I vote a five to zero, recommend a denial of SLOP2. All right, thank you.
Okay, next case is rezoning case Z6, Sovereign Pacific LLC requests a rezoning from GC LI.
Before we go into that, we're gonna take a break.
Okay.
Let's take a 10-minute recess and reconvene at 10:27. Thank you.[1123.58]
Hearing, we are going to move into our next case, so I'll turn it up to you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. Next case is rezoning case Z six, Sovereign Pacific LLC, request to rezoning from GEC to LI for storage and parking for light industrial uses in land lots four twenty-two and four twenty-three of the seventeenth district. Property is located on the southwest side of Atlanta Road, south of Mosley Drive. Is the applicant present? The director said the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z six?
No.
That director says no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward and be sworn in?
Good morning. I guess we're still morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Andy Ship. I'm the property owner, and I'm here today with my engineer, David Stewart with Gaskins and La Croix, who's available to answer any technical questions you may have. As you know, I'm requesting my property be rezoned to light industrial for the construction of a parking lot for uses allowed in the light industrial zoning category, including for landscape companies. In addition to my comments, I will share with the commission later a little flyover video and a rendering. As mentioned, it's in your staff presentation, the property is currently zoned general commercial, and through a code amendment, the general commercial category was discontinued. I guess that's the right phrase. And so all of the uses in that category at the time were frozen through that amendment. So because my property was vacant, I'm frozen as vacant. So even though I'm zoned general commercial, I'm not allowed to use any of the uses in general commercial. In fact, it's my understanding I'm not allowed to use it for anything without coming to the commission. So that's why I'm here today. It's kind of a unique situation. I'd never been stuck in kind of the limbo, I guess, purgatory maybe. I'm hoping today to get the right to use my property for an economically viable use. That's what I'm asking the commission for. Over the last seven years that I've owned this property, I've been approached by many potential tenants and buyers. Most have been scared away by the time and expense and expertise required to rezone the property. From this side of the podium, it can be a very intimidating experience. The common element among interested callers is the need for parking, especially from the landscape community. And I think we got that earlier today from another landscaper. I understand that staff has suggested that I request a downzone to tourist service zoning category. And while we all hope that South Atlanta Road becomes a future tourist hotspot, I have concerns with this suggestion, as the TS zoning district does not allow many of the uses that I'm seeking today, specifically allowing landscape companies to store pine straw, mulch, and rock that we all need to maintain each of our lawns. These guys have to store it somewhere, and for this reason, I would strongly urge the commission to honor my light industrial zoning request. I want to reiterate that my zoning, my proposed zoning use is compatible, it is compatible with the future land use map, and I believe it will benefit the surrounding neighborhood, and here's why. Today, my vacant lot has been a favorite location for vandals to dump trash. Since I've owned the site, I've had the opportunity, I guess you'd call it, to clean up other people's dumps on my site, including roof shingles, tires, and for some reason, people keep dumping toilets on the property. I don't know what that's about. I've hauled off at least six huge thirty-yard dumpsters of trash from the property, and it's been a continuous battle. And so I've hired a landscaper who checks it on a monthly basis and tries to keep up with what people dump. I think it's also important to add that the surrounding area has been the focus of redevelopment efforts on the part of both the federal and state and local governments. The property's in an opportunity zone and an enterprise zone, which have been designated by the government to encourage economic growth and job creation in historically under-invested areas. My proposed use as a parking lot will support these goals, will support the goals of the initiatives by supporting job creators and providing much-needed parking facilities for those companies who wish to service customers in the area. I'd like to share with you a little quick flyover video, thanks to Google Earth, to kind of give you a picture of the surrounding area, the industrial properties in the area, and the nearby transportation corridors, especially the railroad track that you'll see. We're right behind Dobbins, and as we zoom in to the property, which is shown with the red little pushpin there, you'll see that everything up and down the road is full of cars and mostly industrial-style buildings. It is clear to see why this property is zoned industrial-compatible on the future land use map. If you would pause it right there. You'll see that I'm bordered to the north by a property owner who's using his property for storage. I don't know how. He has the same zoning as me, but he is. And no parking, no paving, no nothing. To the, to the top of the page there, you'll see an industrial-style building that is zoned general commercial, but if they had to come in front of the commission today, that welding shop, which has been there for thirty-five years, or more than thirty-five years, would be considered heavy industrial. So that's the flavor of the area. These industrial uses have been there for years and years and years. What else? Would you do the rendering? I've also prepared a rendering of the proposed parking lot. And the rendering, I've modified it based on staff comments, which I think are very valid. DOT asked me to push the entrance back, which I did. The staff wanted me to do a ten-foot landscape buffer along Atlanta Road. That's completely valid. They wanted me to do a twenty-foot landscape buffer on the rear, completely valid. And then I've also submitted a special stipulations letter to the staff where I'm outlining sort of the do's and don'ts on the property. Nobody wants some grinding up stuff and storing smelly stuff and fuel and any of that. So I don't want it because it'll contaminate my property. So it shows the parking lot has important features. I think I mentioned that it's, it's paved, first of all, which my neighbors are not. It's striped. It's fenced. It's gated. It has landscape buffers. And then we've done the special stipulations letter. Further, I'd like to emphasize that the proposed use will not negatively impact nearby residents. Zoning conditions outlined in the special use letter ensure that the parking lot is used appropriately and does not disturb the residents. In conclusion, I believe that the property is suitable for light industrial zoning for use as a parking lot, including by landscape companies. I think the flyover showed the number of industrial communities or existing industrial in the area, and I believe that I've addressed the concerns in my stipulations letter. So I respectfully request that the commission honors the light industrial zoning request that is compatible with the future land use map and the proposed use is approved. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. You can have a seat. With no opposition, I'll turn this over to District Three, Commissioner Dan.
I'm gonna, Mr. Ship, I'm gonna ask you if you'll step back up here. I just want to run through some questions. So, I mean, first of all, and I think you answered this, but this would be an impervious surface, correct?
Yes, ma'am. It will be a paved parking lot.
Okay. And you show on the diagram we're looking at three open stalls, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is, is that just a proposal? Is that fixed?
It's, we, we wrote on our site plan that we have the option to add them, but it may be that they're not needed. But I wanted to, I guess I'm just trying to be as thorough as I can. This is, the, the tenants that have called me that want to park there would need some sort of bulk storage. Now, I'm, you know, maybe they could keep it on their truck and not have it on the ground, but I was just showing it as a representation what would be ideal.
Okay. You know, I just, I'm just familiar with some other areas in the county where, you know, that kind of open storage just becomes unsightly and hard to manage. And so what kind of management tools would you have for it to make sure that it didn't become that problematic?
Well, the, from a landlord perspective, I have restrictions in the lease, and essentially rules. So it's, and those conditions mirror my special stipulations letter. So no fuel storage, no odor, anything that will be stored there would be inert. So it's, it's strictly landscape, mulch, I mean, mulch, what did I say? Mulch, pine straw, and any landscape rocks, basically. And then I was gonna put them in the container, the bins that I showed you, so that they're not just spread out everywhere.
And that's the portion of the lot that you would propose to limit it to?
Yes, ma'am. That's the portion, portion that backs up to Boss Welding. So I share about a hundred and thirty-eight foot border with the apartments. Those apartments also share a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot border with Boss Welding, but I was gonna put it on that side.
Have you discussed outdoor storage with staff?
Only, only related to bins of, of, not outdoor storage, of, what's the word you guys use, where you reduce materials, where you're grinding and stuff. So it's not, it's not debris. It's, it's essentially supplies that I need to bring to your house. You know, everybody's gonna want mulch in the spring. They're gonna bring it in bulk. They're gonna put it in there, and then as they need it, they're gonna take it to my house and your house. And those people that want gravel instead of mulch, or those people want pine straw instead of gravel, you know, they'll have bins of those items.
Are you proposing to bring customers to this site?
No, ma'am. This'll only be, just like the landscape guys earlier, they need a place to park their trucks. They come in the mornings, the workers come, they park in the parking lot, they get in the truck, they go to the job site, they bring the trucks back, and they go home.
And, and just to clarify, because of something you just said, you're not, we are in agreement that we're not talking about any grinding or any--
Yes, ma'am. That's my special stipulations letter. We have no intent of--
Okay. And so who will be responsible for the maintenance of the property?
The tenant will, under a lease, and the lease will include the special stipulations that I've agreed to here. All my leases have a rules page.
So is it, is it your intention to rent to one tenant or more than one tenant?
That's, that's my hope. Yes, ma'am.
Which one?
I don't, I don't have them in my pocket.
Okay.
Every one I have, I say, okay, we'll go to rezoning together and let's go do it. And they say, I don't have time for that. I don't know anything about it. And so that's why I'm here. I'm like, I'm tired of taking the phone calls and nobody waiting. And so I'm like, I'm gonna do it. And I'm confident that I can get at least--
So it would be one or more as tenants? Is that what you're saying? You're not talking about rental to one tenant, or is that an option?
I'm, that's, yes, ma'am. That's what I want. That's what I'm advertising--
A single tenant?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I don't, what I don't know, to be really hyper-specific in your question, is are there gonna be two landscape companies that wanna share it? I don't know if they'll be, you know, like these guys that were here earlier, you know, do they wanna share it with somebody else? But I'm gonna have one lease.
Okay. So I have in the staff analysis, and I'm, and I've read your letters of correspondence as well, but I'm, I was uncertain. You are in agreement to the construction of a fence on the rear property line?
Absolutely. A solid fence along the portion, the hundred and forty, hundred and thirty-eight feet that I share with the apartment complex.
Okay. And you--
I'm friends with some of the owners of those buildings, and I don't wanna do anything.
You wanna stay friends.
Yeah. Right.
Okay. And so are you also agreeable to the staff recommendation that that would also include a twenty-foot landscape screening buffer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And staff has also proposed a ten-foot landscape buffer along Atlanta Road?
Yes, ma'am. No problem. Those are things I would've done anyway, but it's--
Okay. Do you own this site that's on the lower right corner?
No, ma'am. Unfortunately--
Can you tell me what that is?
It's--
Besides being unsightly?
It's a great storage of trash. I don't know. It's unpaved gravel. He's using it for storage. Like I said, I'm not sure how he was able to do it, and somehow I'm not able to do it with the same sort of, but he's just been doing it. And so--
Okay. But that's not your property?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And is the property on the other side someone else's property?
Well, the other side is actually Cobb County.
Okay.
There's a little strip, if you see my blue detention pond that I've sort of outlined?
Oh, I thought it was a trampoline.
On the other side, you know, Mr. Boss owns the strip.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And so do, do we have the terms of your proposed leases?
No, ma'am. I had, I didn't submit a proposed lease.
Okay.
Generally, what happens is when I'm bound legally, I put whatever I'm legally bound to in the lease of my tenant so that I'm not liable.
Right. But so, I mean, what kind of restrictions have you considered in terms of time, access? Is that just to be twenty-four hours?
I really, I assume, and this is something we can discuss, but it's normal business hours. I mean, a landscape company is probably gonna start early. You know, they're gonna get out there at seven and get their trucks and then hit, hit the road and be gone all day and then come back at, you know, in the summer, they're gonna come back at dark. You know, in the winter, they're, it's gonna sit. Just, you know, we all have those guys that show up at our house. Thank goodness.
Right. And do you have lighting and security features planned?
Yes, ma'am. I am gonna have lights. I have not designed the lights yet, but everybody wants their things stored safely. That's why it's fenced and gated.
Right. So you say fenced and gated, but what we've talked for is a fence across the back. Are you gonna fence the sides as well?
Yes, ma'am. The whole property will be fenced. The portion that backs up to the apartments will be a solid fence. I kinda want to leave the other open so people can see if somebody's there, you know. I don't wanna put a solid fence that nobody can see what's behind the fence.
Okay. So what type of fencing would you propose for the rest of the property?
I haven't gotten that far in my thought process.
You can talk with staff about that, kind of.
Yeah.
Okay. And so a paved surface, though, and lined surface. All right. And you're agreeable to all other staff recommendations that were outlined in the--
I believe so, especially if I can, I need to, I wanna stick with the LI zoning so that I can have this outside storage without it turning into another special use permit later.
Do you have any other progressive plans, plans for progressive use of the property?
I'm sorry, I didn't--
I mean, I guess you're saying you want, you wanna retain the LI, but do you have plans for something other than a parking lot with storage on it?
Not at this time. I'm hoping that in another seven or ten years, you know, that these economic development, the enterprise zone, the opportunity zone will kick in, and maybe I could build a building there one day. It's really just not viable today, but I have gotten tons of phone calls from these guys with the landscape companies that are trying to service customers in the area and can't find anything.
So it's a possibility that sometime in the future you might be interested in a building for the purposes of storage or access or business?
Yes, ma'am, but the way I understand it, I have to come back and ask for that.
Okay.
That's what I was told, anyway. So if I do, I'll come back and I'll have a rendering and everything.
Okay. And so is, is this graphic consistent with the site plan that was submitted?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. The only thing different we did here was we added the landscape buffers that were, were, those comments were made after we had submitted the revised site plan. So I didn't have time to revise the site plan again. So in the rendering, we went ahead and added those two landscape areas. Just ran out of time.
All right. Okay. All right. Anyone else have questions of the applicant?
Any other questions? Would happen. No. Oh, Commissioner Anderson.
Just, can you just clarify, that, that sliver on the rendering, which looks like the blue area, that's, that, that's a detention pond on that?
The, the blue?
Yes.
Yes, sir. That's just trying to show everybody where the detention pond is proposed.
Okay. I was just trying to rectify, 'cause there, there seems to be, between this and the county site, kind of a little strip that is not owned, that's owned by the welding company--
That's correct, Mr. Boss.
Yes, Mr. Boss. And so I just wanted to confirm whether that was in that--
No, I'm not--
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not on his property. It's--
Okay. And, and, okay, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yes, yes, sir.
Back to you, Commissioner Dan.
Okay. If I, if I can have Mr. Carver come forward, please.
Carl Carver, Cobb County Stormwater.
Hey, Carl. If you could speak to the appropriateness of, of this site plan and the, the breadth of the impervious surface based on your analysis.
Sure. I mean, with it being paved, it's going to be over the 5,000 square feet of impervious surface criteria. So he will have to provide a stormwater pond in, in that general area where he has it shown as the appropriate place. If he can't get the volume there that's required, then I'm sure the engineer for him will look at doing something under the parking lot.
Are there any other concerns that you have respect for this plan?
My stormwater comments recommend some cross strains of culvert downstream to be evaluated along with the hydrology study, all of which is done at plan and review.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And Mr. Peterson, if I can ask you a few questions. The recommendation for TS, it, it looks like that's consistent with a couple of other properties on the road?
Uh, that is correct. And as the applicant alluded, there is a strip of property between where his detention pond is and a, a, a property that the county owns right now that we're trying to sell. That's Zone TS.
Okay. So that property is Zone TS? And on the other side, is there another property that's Zone TS? I thought I saw it on the map.
Um, probably on the other side of Mosley is a property Zone TS at the corner of Mosley and Atlanta Road.
And can you speak to what the use of that is currently?
I believe it's some type of auto repair shop.
Okay. Um, and so TS would permit this surface parking proposal?
Yes. TS does allow parking for automobiles, parking lots and things like that, and other uses where you may see a lot of cars outside such as auto sales and leases, boat sales and things like that. So the staff felt that the TS would kind of fit what, what he wants to do as part, as far as parking trailers and vehicles.
Okay. And so what about these, these issues of lighting and security deal? Have any recommendations for that?
Well, staff recommendation as far as the residential that's next to this is we wanted to put a fence and buffering, which he's showing now.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, he is showing a fence along the access to Atlanta Road so that will take care of the front secured access. Probably would need a condition regarding lighting on that so that it wouldn't shine onto the road or to the adjacent residential properties.
Okay. Are, are there any other recommendations that you would make for us other than what's contained in your analysis?
Uh, I would like to just clarify one thing. Uh, the applicant kept coming back to 1800 Atlanta Road, which is the property next door. It's the one I showed next to his property with, looks like a, a trailer and a, a truck.
Uh-huh.
You know, code enforcement, code enforcement's been working on that since 2021. And we had a, a trial about two weeks ago in court and they pleaded guilty to that. So that should be cleaned up pretty quick. So code, code enforcement has been working on that for two years straight.
Okay. And that property is, what's the zoning of that property?
General Commercial.
GC as well?
GC.
Is it, will it, once the code violations are cleared up, will it be vacant property?
It, it should be vacant until they come in with a rezoning application to put it into a, a compliant category.
Okay. And what is staff's opinion and recommendation with respect to the storage of pine straw, mulch, rock and other materials like that on the property?
Staff recommendation would not permit that use. You know, all the parking spaces have to be occupied by either a vehicle or a trailer that has something on it. It can't be just bulk storage of landscape materials.
So the materials can be stored on, on a trailer that's parked there? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. You know, say someone has a trailer and has got, it's got a pallet of pine bark nuggets, that would be fine.
Okay. As long as it's contained in the trailer?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have questions of staff?
Commissioner Bellone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Peterson, what successful tourism enterprises are immediately adjacent to or near to this site?
The zoning category tourist services is not meant to be strictly a tourism-type category, Commissioner Bellone. It's intended to serve businesses that serve the traveling public. And, you know, you find TS mainly along major corridors such as Atlanta Road or South Cobb Drive or near 285 or I-75.
What, if anything, has been on this piece of property that Cobb County owns right next door?
Uh, it's currently a vacant piece of property. I'm not aware of it ever being developed for anything.
Do you know how long Cobb County's owned it?
Uh, I'm not aware.
So you, you'd agree with me that, that in terms of tourism per se, that, that there's not a lot of tourism on the backside of Dobbins? Is that fair? I, I can just think of there's a air museum at some location.
There was, there is one, but it, it's kind of far up Atlanta Road from this location.
Uh-huh.
Now, the closest thing that would probably be tourism would probably be the Battery, the Atlanta Braves.
Okay. All right. What harms, what harm are you concerned about from, from allowing an LI with the, the site plan specific to, to parking landscaping vehicles? What kind of harm are you concerned about in terms of any adverse impact on the value of the county-owned property?
Well, you know, Atlanta Road is a, is a, is a direct connection from Atlanta to Marietta. And the city of Marietta, the city of Smyrna have both spent a lot of time and money kind of cleaning up their parts of the corridor. And our board has tried to do the same thing here. I mean, just off the GS screen from this is a, a new townhome community the board zoned a few years ago called Belmore, I believe. And the board's tried to zone things on Atlanta Road that are more upscale, trying to bring the corridor up from where it is. And, you know, staff's opinion is if you allow bulk storage of landscaping on this, this is probably what it's going to become mostly. And that tends to harm the aesthetics of the property and any kind of redevelopment around the property.
Can you comment on the, the next, as you go north and, or west on Atlanta Road? There, we see three LIs there. Can you comment on what's there?
Those are older LIs, Commissioner Bellone, and I believe one or two may be auto-related. And I'm not sure what the third, the most northern one is.
Thank you.
Any other questions from fellow commissioners? Commissioner Anderson?
John, only question was, I think that site just to the north went through a 2016. There was a submission for rezoning and I think it was withdrawn. Uh, just wanted to understand that this is, I think, I believe the site, which was just the subject of that prolonged code enforcement. Can you remind us what the use that was contemplated for that might have been, if, if my recollection's correct?
Yeah, that was Z-20 of 2016. And I'm pulling that one right now. That one was trying, they were trying to zone that from general commercial to LI for a light auto repair.
Okay. Great. And do you have any context as to why that might have been withdrawn? Was there, or? No worries at all. I'm just trying to understand, just given that the site right next to it went through a rezoning request and got withdrawn.
Yeah. I'm not sure if it got withdrawn or rejected. It doesn't, it doesn't say on the map.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Back to you, Commissioner Dent.
I, I don't have anything further. If anyone else wanted to address anyone. Okay. At this time then, I would like to make a motion to delete to TS subject to all staff comments and recommendations with the exception of item number three of the zoning division comments. It currently addresses parking and storage permissions. So if we delete that item, that would be part of my motion. Further, subject to the requirements that, one, parking should be permitted only in areas designated on an approved site plan. Two, such parking must be on an impervious surface and striped. Three, no outdoor storage of landscaping or other materials shall be permitted. Four, a solid fence to be installed at the rear of the property line with a 20-foot landscape buffer. A 10-foot landscape buffer to be installed along Atlanta Road and fencing to enclose the property shall be required. Security measures including lighting, not to interfere with adjacent properties shall be required. And the applicant shall be required to provide a stormwater pond if it's necessary based upon an approved site plan. And that would be my motion.
Second. We have a second from Commissioner Hughes. Is there any discussion? If not, let's call the question. A vote of five to zero. We recommend deletion to TS or Z-6. Thank you.
Okay. Next item, moving into your temporary land use permits, LUP-6. Antonio Rodriguez requests a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles and adults than the code allows in 155th and 17th District located on the east side of Ostel Circle, southeast of Ostel Road. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for LUP-6?
No.
Is there anyone here opposed to LUP-6? One person opposed, Mr. Chairman. Would the, would the opposition please come forward to be sworn in?
Hi. Good morning.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Diane Eamon and I live in the middle of Ostel Circle. I'm obviously here in opposition to this action because it is in noncompliance with the Cobb County Single Family Dwelling Code, which stipulates 390 square feet per adult in residences. And unfortunately, this residence is, according to the Cobb County tax records, is 950 square feet, which only allows 2.4 adults. And unfortunately, I think most of the residents in our neighborhood view the, this code as being more related to parking versus the number of adults living in the residences because there are several other residences in the area that have more than the required number of adults in the homes. So I would respectfully ask that the commission oppose this request. Two years ago, the planning commission rejected a special land use permit for another residence on the opposite end of the circle, which was larger. But they also were in noncompliance with the number of adults living in the residence at the time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This is in District Four. So Commissioner Hughes, I'll turn it to you for discussion.
Thank you. I guess I have a question for the opposition once she finishes signing in.
Yes.
Hi. Do, I'm, I'm just curious, do you know how many people actually occupy this home? Who actually?
I believe there's three.
There's three.
And I, when I checked a few weeks ago when I saw the notice for this hearing, I, I also checked the code violations and there appears to still be an active code violation right now. Initially, I believe when some of the code violations were cited for parking, they were more because of the number of vehicles on, parked on the property and the number of trucks parked on the street, which somewhat hampered the neighbors across the street or visitors backing out onto Ostel Circle. I have not observed that recently at this residence, so I think they are trying to come into compliance. But unfortunately, the, the square footage of the residence is not such that they would be required to do that.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions to the opposition?
You have questions?
Okay.
Okay. And so, John, I know staff has recommended denial of this, this case. Could you give us a little bit of background on staff's recommendation?
Yes, sir. The staff did recommend this case be denied. Uh, you know, we based that partially on the code enforcement violation that was received and it's in your casework here, the case, of course. Uh, and based on the house size, which only would allow a maximum of two cars or two adults to live in the house. You know, it appears that there's a lot of driveway on this property. So if the house, if they could add it out to the house and make it bigger, you know, they would have enough to have all four cars on the property as long as one was parked in the carpool. But, you know, the code enforcement history, the negative effects it's had on the neighbors is primarily why the staff recommended it be denied.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I'm not sure what to make of the fact the applicant's not here. I may have questions for the application.
We did call him and he's working right, he's working today. He cannot attend.
Okay. Well, I don't think I have much choice then. Not here really to answer any questions. I think based on that, I, well, let me say this, because I, my other concern is, I'm sorry, I, I wonder at some point if, if this code requirement might be revisited. It seems there should be other variables considered when we're trying to determine the adequacy of parking on proper, on people's properties. And, and also just looking at society today, kids coming home, parents, caregivers, things of that nature. I, I would hope at some point we, the county might consider revisiting this particular code section, looking at the size of the lot itself, the depth, the, the setback from the roadway. There seems to be plenty of room here to accommodate other vehicles. Obviously, any other equipment, trailers, work truck vehicles, that would be a concern. Um, and I could, that could be addressed through, I think, stipulations. But I'm a little, a little at a loss here to, to move this forward when the applicant's not here, to really answer questions that I have and perhaps my other fellow commissioners have at this point. So on that basis, I'm going to recommend that we deny the request as submitted by the applicant. That's my motion.
I'll second for the purposes of discussion.
Second from Commissioner Dent. And then is there, are open for discussion?
Yeah. Michael, I, I share your concerns and I think because it is an important issue, it would be best to give the applicant one more opportunity to appear. And so I was wondering if for that reason we might, you might be willing to entertain holding it.
Is there further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, my, my comment along the same lines as can be if it's going to be denied, perhaps do so without prejudice if, if the applicant wanted to come back and give it another shot. But, and, and I also share the concerns about, I don't know how 2.4 people live. shot, but, and I also share the concerns about, I don't know how 2.4 people live somewhere. Perhaps it might be an opportunity for rounding up administratively at least to the next whole person, but...
Thank you.
That was just my, just wanted to advance that thought as well. And I appreciate both your, your comments, I would be willing to amend my motion to include denial without prejudice. And that would be my motion, amended motion. Okay. A second then?
We have a, a, a second on the amended motion from Commissioner Ballon, and I'll open it up for discussion, and I'll just, I'll just add that I want to echo the comments originally made by Commissioner Hughes about revisiting this section of code, just giving the changes in societal living, and so I hope that that will be something that this commission will take up. No further discussion, we will call the question. So by vote of five to zero, we recommend denial without prejudice of LUP-6.
That completes your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, we have two other business to discuss quickly, let's look at approval of the minutes of zoning hearing, planning commission from February 7th, 2023. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Ballon, any discussion? All right, call the question. Head of minutes are approved by a vote of five to zero. Second, we have the minute of the special call meeting agenda review work session held on February 27th. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Anderson, if no discussion, let's call that question. By vote of five to zero, the minute of the February 27th, agenda review work session, minutes are approved as well. Seeing no other business, we stand adjourned, thank you.